And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council. The first item on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item is item A1. This is submission of minutes of December 19th, 2018.
Motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, is ordinance 2018-17. This was scheduled to be the second reading for adoption for the extension of a no parking area on Noize Avenue. After the first reading, we did hear from the original petitioner, who asked council indulgence to allow her to withdraw her request. Based upon that, we did not advertise it effectively for second reading, assuming that the council would just wish to receive and file the matter.
So I'll move.
Second.
So there's a motion and a second. Receive and file? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is ordinance 2018-18. The council will recall that it considered this for first reading at its last meeting. This was to allow for an amendment to the zoning code. The council had considered the possibility of allowing, in certain areas, brew pubs, and this would be an instrument to allow that to happen. Due to a Bristol-Phoenix era, the first advertisement did not happen. So we were compelled to extend it one more meeting, one more week of advertising. So this is really informational at this point, that the public hearing will be held on February 6th.
So you don't need action from this council?
Don't really need action. The next item is the item D1. This is the petition of Lisa Paulino for Panoni's LLC, 553 Hope Street, requests council consideration for a vidling license. You have recommendations provided by the various departments.
Is Ms. Paulino here?
Yeah.
Excellent. Tim, you were going to make a motion, I thought?
Oh, yeah. Based on all the positive recommendations, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Before we vote on this, this is the part of the show where you get a 30-second commercial. And before you start off, no, that's right, but before you start off, I can do a little bit for you. I've had two people come to me today and say, "Have you approved this yet? We're having dinner there next week." It's a great assumption, though, but please.
Yeah, so we are in the location of the old Bristol Family Restaurant. We are not doing breakfast. We are doing lunch and dinner. Casual Comfort Food. Our wonderful chef-owner, William Panoni, is the mastermind behind lots of the menu items. And six days a week, lunch and dinner. We are going to have, we're BYOB. We have milkshakes, and I'm doing specialty lemonades, iced teas, all kinds of good stuff. Yeah, hope you come and join us.
Excellent.
Lunch and dinner. Congratulations.
Tomorrow, so we're headed right back there.
Oh, wow.
And kind of a loose end, so yes, tomorrow, the 17th, is our first day. Grand opening.
All right.
11:00 AM. Follow us on Facebook and Instagram.
Big ribbon cutting?
What?
Big ribbon cutting?
Big ribbon cutting.
All right.
With postage holes.
Congratulations and best wishes.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So we're going to vote on it before we give congratulations. So we have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Now, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We'll look forward to it. Thank you for seeing you there.
No, not at all.
Item D2, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council. This is the petition of the Our Lady of Mount Carmel PTG. Request council consideration for a bingo license.
Based on all the positive recommendations, make a motion to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the request from the Thame Street Landing Tavern Company LLC, doing business as DeWolfe Tavern at 259 Thame Street. Request council consideration for a transfer of the Class BV liquor license currently held by the establishment. This is a stock transfer. This would be the call for a public hearing on February 6th.
So I'll move to hold a public hearing.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And finally, in the licensing section, we have the petition from Denise Scholler on behalf of Our Lady of Mount Carmel Church, requesting an entertainment license. This is for their annual feast. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator and the fire chief.
Based on all the recommendations, make a motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is item F1. This is from Lynn Shore on behalf of the Bristol Merchants Association as a resident entity and co-sponsor with East Bay Chamber of Commerce for the Celebration Style Fashion Show. This is permission to sell and serve alcoholic beverages on town property, which is the Maritime Center, on January 27th, 2019. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator, fire chief, harbor master, and also chief of police.
What's this council's pleasure?
Based on the recommendations and attention to the observations made by the chief, I recommend that we approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second. We're at the discussion. Hello, Betty, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Another opportunity for a 30-second commercial. Please.
In conjunction with the BMA, the East Bay Chamber, and Highlander Charter School are doing a fashion show on Sunday, the 27th. Will be highlighting children through adults. We're having a brunch. We hope to be having a bar there for mimosas. It's going to be a great time at the Maritime Center.
Is there tickets available, Betty, or is it?
There are still tickets available. You can get them by calling the chamber office.
I'm sorry, you may have mentioned this. Where are the proceeds going?
It is going to primarily the Chamber and Highlander Charter School for their think-tank that they do. It's a program to introduce youth to business. So that's where the proceeds will be going.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other discussion? So there's a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
The next item, which is item F2, this is the petition of Henry Pizino Jr., pastor of Our Lady of Mount Carmel Church. Request council approval for the use of the town common and permission to sell and serve alcoholic beverages. This is for their annual feast to be held in the middle of July. And you have recommendations provided by the town administrative chief of police and the assistant director of Parks and Recreation.
I move that we, I move passage. I mean, there's never been a problem there that I'm aware of, and I'm there most of the time during the feast, so.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, next petition, is from Keith Maloney, the president of the Friends of Historic Bristol, regarding their request for council consideration for cosponsorship for the Donovan Ripkema presentation and the Main Street America Program. You have a late item recommendation provided by the economic development coordinator and the town administrator.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to come before you, requesting support for the speaker series that Friends of Historic Bristol is going to be having here in Bristol. Before I get into those specifics, I'd like to recognize and give credit to Diane Williamson, Ed Tanner, and Chris Vitale for their efforts to enhance the economic development here in Bristol. We are where we are due to their, in large part, due to their efforts, along with the support of current and prior town administrators and council. What we are proposing will supplement all of those efforts with a program that has proven measurable success in over 1,600 communities across the United States. Friends of Historic Bristol has invited Place Economics principal Donovan Rikma. It's a tough name, I know. I know how you feel over there. Donovan Rikma, to visit Bristol on February the 28th to share the specifics of the report of his study regarding the power of historic preservation as an economic driver. Many may not recognize how valuable our quaint historic seaside architecture is to the vitality of our downtown commercial district. Donovan, an acknowledged expert in this field, will use real data, data taken from Bristol's own statistics, to make this point very clear. The expense from Mr. Rikma's visit will be borne by the Friends of Historic Bristol. We are not asking the town to share in that expense. However, if you should choose to make a contribution, we will gratefully accept it. Following shortly after Place Economics' visit will be Kathy LaPlante of Main Street America, another nationally recognized organization that has guided the economic revitalization in about 2,000 downtown commercial districts across America over the last 35 years. At this point, we don't have a specific date planned for Kathy's visit. We want it, however, to follow soon after Place Economics and Donovan Rikma, so likely it would take place in late March or early April. A prime example of what Main Street America is all about is its timely response to the needs of communities in a scheduled webinar to take place tomorrow afternoon at 3 o'clock regarding opportunity zones in historic districts. This is the kind of thing they do, and they do it very well. Likewise, the expense associated with Ms. LaPlante's visit will also be borne by Friends of Historic Bristol. So given where we are and how much we have already planned, you may ask why we're before you tonight, asking for you to become a co-sponsor. Recognize that we did meet a week or so before Christmas with Steve Contente, Diane Williamson, and Chris Vitale, went over this essential program with them, and it was at Steve's suggestion that we come before you to gain your support. Why do we want you to be a co-sponsor? Simply stated, we think that your support of these efforts is important. Important because it puts Bristol in a leadership position on the issue of economic revitalization in small towns across Rhode Island. Several other Rhode Island towns, specifically Wakefield, Tiverton, and North Kingston, have joined us and expressed interest in becoming Main Street America communities. While there is currently no state-level Main Street America structure in Rhode Island, note that there is in every other state of New England, we believe that this puts you in a position to lead in that effort. Friends of Historic Bristol is going to be meeting with representatives on this whole issue on Friday, January 25th. We're going to meet with representatives from the communities I just named. We have invited state representatives Susan Donovan, Ken Marshall. We have acceptances from Main Street America's state coordinator for the state of Connecticut, a gentleman by the name of Patrick McMahon. We have acceptances from representatives from Growth Smart Rhode Island. And hopefully, after tonight, with your support, we will have representation at this meeting from Bristol Town Government. At this meeting, we'll be discussing the process of developing a state-level structure, as well as what it really takes to become a Main Street community. It's a learning experience. Let's find out more from the people who do these great things. The structure of that day is basically that he's coming early in the morning, and we, Friends of Historic Bristol, will be taking Mr. McMahon on a joyride, cook's tour of the East Bay. Take him through Warren, of course, all around Bristol, down into Tiverton and so forth, to show him the lay of the land. Then we'll return to Bristol, where everyone will gather for a luncheon meeting, which will take place at about 1 o'clock. We strongly believe that the future of Bristol can be advantaged by its participation in this process. And it is with that specific concept in mind that we respectfully request that you sponsor with us this ongoing program. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. So as the clerk had pointed out, we got a last, a late item. Diane Williamson and Chris Vitale, which of course Keith pointed out, shared some thoughts on this. Could you elaborate a little bit more? This was a late item, so I don't think this council had the opportunity to read through everything, so you could share your thoughts on this.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, Mr. Administrator.
If you'd oblige me to just clear the record. My advice to Mr. Maloney after a couple of emails was that the administrator would not sponsor this alone. It was my recommendation would be bring it to the council. If the council agreed to sponsor the event, then I would do everything I could to help. But the original request was for the administrator to sponsor the event in the Burnside Building, and that was denied.
Thank you.
The event, the event that Mr. Contente speaks about is the date when Mr. Rikma is going to be in Bristol. The concept of how that date will work, just for clarification, is Mr. Rikma will be meeting with small groups of about 12 to 14 influencers in Bristol. We're going to have about six of those one-hour meetings, and what we would like to do is for that to take place in the Burnside Building. Central location. Rikma stays there. The 12 or 14 people come there. They meet in a roundtable discussion, learn what he has to say. That group leaves, another group comes in, et cetera. Six times, starting at 8:30 in the morning till late afternoon. In the evening, Mr. Rikma would then make a public presentation in St. Michael's Church to the public in general about the subject of preservation as an economic driver. So yes, we did request that the town sponsor us in the Burnside Building because without that sponsorship, we can't use it. And Steve is correct. He denied that request.
Thank you. Diane? And Chris.
Thank you. So I'll just, I'll just start, and you know, I do think that in terms of historic preservation and recognizing its importance in terms of heritage tourism and economic development, I think Bristol already is a leader. I know that was sort of presented early by Mr. Maloney, that we've done a lot of work, and I think we continue to do a lot of work. I feel at this point as though the program that is being proposed tonight is really redundant to what we are already doing. We've got groups. We've got the Historic District Commission, Explore Bristol, the BMA, the East Bay Chamber. I could name probably a few more. And I think that while the capacity for volunteers is always necessary with these groups, I think the infrastructure and the organizational structures are already there. I did look into this a few years ago with the Roger Williams Community Partnership Center to see if it was something that the town could benefit from. They looked at a regional approach with Bristol, Warren, and Barrington. The decision was made at that time that Bristol didn't really have a strong need for this kind of a program. It was really there with a lot of the work that was already being done. There might be some gaps that could be filled in, but generally speaking, it was, it was already being accomplished. So the focus was on Warren through the East Bay Chamber, another group that is supporting economic development in Bristol. So I feel as though it's not something that we have a really strong need to sponsor. We have the opportunity zone, as was mentioned. Chris Vitale has been doing a lot of work nominating the town for that program. He's been going to trainings on that, which is a new program we're all learning as it moves forward. I mean, if this is something that the state of Growth Smart wants to take on in the future and bring on as a statewide program, we can reconsider it at that point, when other communities will maybe be looking at it too. But at this point in time, I don't see the need to sponsor this as a town program. Chris can speak to the research that he has done with the Main Street program. The certification process to be a certified community is very intensive, and he's done a lot of research, which he can present on that. I initially thought when we met, gee, it would be great. Maybe we can, you know, we'll throw our hat in. It's not something that the government can really take on. It needs to have its own separate board of directors and its own budget and financing. It's, it's, it's really a separate, in my opinion, it's a separate, non-governmental organization. And when you think about it that way, and then you think about all the organizations that we have today that are doing the same or very similar work in Bristol, I just don't see the need to sponsor it. And I'll let Chris elaborate on the research that he did, and if you have any other questions, you can certainly answer them.
Diane, I just had a quick question. So could they, although the messaging is excellent, we want this. I mean, this is great. But long and short of it, if we, the sponsoring isn't, if we don't go forward with the sponsoring, could they still coexist and work with our, with our, with our groups? I mean,
I think they could do it on their own. We did encourage them to talk to the other groups and build some consensus with the organizations that are doing this now. They could certainly do it, you know, on their own with no town sponsorship. And that's something that, you know, they could certainly take on. So I'll let Chris speak to the research.
Yeah, thank you. So just to recap, the Main Street America program is a national program that really focuses on preservation-based economic development. You know, as Mr. Maloney mentioned, you know, across the United States, there's about 1,600 communities that take part in this program. Of those, 829 have received this accreditation that Diana had mentioned. And really, to become one of these accredited communities, they have several performance standards that they want to see these communities meet, and that they do routinely check to make sure that you stay up to date with them. So just a few of them that I think are, are of noteworthyness. It requires a full-time executive director to manage the program at 40 hours per week. That's based on the population of the community that it's serving. It would require a minimum operating budget of $60,000. As Diane mentioned, it would require it to be under a separate entity that has an active board of directors, and it would have to be a member of the Main Street America network. So there are some annual dues that are associated with that. I believe they're pretty minor. Earlier this week, I actually had the opportunity to talk to the program manager down in New London, Connecticut, which is the closest Main Street America program to Bristol. And, you know, I really wanted to pick her brain to see, you know, how it came about and how it was benefiting her community. So their program is actually 20 years old, so it's been around for quite a while. At one point, it did have that designation that we're talking about here tonight. And when it started, they really didn't have any of these business advocacy groups that we have here in Bristol. So there was really a need for a group like that to step up and help really promote their downtown businesses. And as she said, they really were trying to get people to their downtown businesses to shop and, you know, make their downtown district a little bit more vibrant. So some of the, or I guess I should say, their organization, how it's structured, you know, I mentioned the costs associated with the program. It relies heavily on investments from the municipality through in-kind donations, through sponsorships, and, and grants that are available. That has been something that has been a struggle for them, as they, you know, wanted to have consistent programming. And I know that, you know, in terms of community offerings, I know that they've, as she said, they've had a few ups and downs with that to make sure the program works and it does everything it's intended to do. As Diane mentioned, we do have a lot of groups here in the area that have been benefiting our downtown over the past several years. We have a tourism partnership, which, as Diane mentioned, is a collection of these groups, such as Explore Bristol, the Bristol Merchants, the East Bay Chamber, Discover Newport. And last year, we allocated approximately $30,000 towards initiatives downtown to get people exploring our downtown district and really promoting ourselves online through the Explore Bristol website and through other PR-related activities. So in addition to that, you know, the town, we do have a lot of different activities already. The Christmas Festival, Concesses on Common, the State Street Fair, the Harbor Fest that takes place, you know, over the summer, and then, of course, our Fourth of July celebration. So really, there is an abundance of opportunity to really volunteer and make sure that the programs that we have in place right now continue to thrive in their, in their current form. I think, looking at this, you know, this program, there's a couple of things to consider. I know that, you know, there is data to show that this has benefited other communities, but there's no data yet to show that it's necessary here in Bristol. I know just looking at other Main Street America program websites, a lot of those elements are already done here. You know, we do stay up to date. I know that, you know, we really do try to implement best practices with economic development and historic preservation. And as Diane mentioned before, we do already have a regulatory process for development activities that take place downtown that really focuses on historic preservation, and that's our Historic District Commission. Really, that's their primary function, and that, obviously, those are, members are appointed by you, and they're volunteer members here in the community. As part of the comprehensive plan, one of the action items in the economic development section is really to try and consolidate some of these different advocacy groups in the downtown district, so everyone really knows what their function is and how they sort of fit into that puzzle to promote our downtown, with the town really taking the lead on those efforts. In addition to that, I would say that this program asks that towns or, I guess, program managers take a look at how they can update land use policies, which we did through our comprehensive plan back in 2016. And that included our downtown district and really what we hope to see happen there over the next 10 years. And finally, as was mentioned before, we do have existing community partners here, and I believe that we should really get the input from them. And to date, we haven't. So I don't know if this is a model that would So I don't know if this is a model that would be desired or is practical here in Bristol without getting that type of input. But if you have any questions, please let me know.
Yeah. I was just wondering if you could maybe tell me a little bit more, and maybe Diane, this is a question for you, about what kind of measures or strategies that we're currently taking right now in town or what some of these other organizations are taking to market some of these historic properties or, you know, market our town for heritage tourism and that kind of thing?
Well, we can both answer that, but I'll just start, and Chris can jump in. Well, the town sponsors the Tourism Partnership, which is a, really a, say, collection of the organizations that used to come to you individually for funding. Now they come through our department as a package with promotion and programming combined. So the BMA does most of the programming. Explore Bristol does most of the promotion or a lot of the promotion and the website. And I think that probably all of their marketing efforts, which are partially funded through the town's Tourism Partnership funding, are devoted to the historic properties downtown, the restaurants, the inns, you know, the shops. And they do articles frequently in all different kinds of magazines to promote Bristol as a destination. It's a pretty, you know, for the funding that they get, I think it's a pretty robust outreach for the advertising that they do. They have a really great website. I know Chris has helped them try to get that a little bit more even better situated. So there's the website, actually through the DACA system that Greg Marsili uses for transient boaters. When they come to Bristol, they get emails and announcements through their, the confirmation of their slips that promote the businesses and the historic downtown. Everything's within walking distance of the transient dock, so it's really nice to be able to offer that to the visiting boaters. You know, over the years, we've done outreach. When we were starting the maritime project, we did outreach specifically to other transient boating facilities to tell people, hey, on your trip through New England, stop in Bristol. So, oh, and the Walking Tour app, thank you, Julie just reminded me. We did a grant with the state a few years ago, and actually, it just had a little bit of a hiccup with the software, but it's back up now. And so that was something that we promoted very heavily, and we're gonna, you know, hopefully keep that current and move forward with that. So, I mean, I think, I think most, if not all, of the town's marketing through the partnership with Explore Bristol is devoted to the heritage tourism, the heritage tourist and cultural tourism. So I don't know if Chris wants to add anything to that.
Yeah, I'll just sort of add a little bit on that public relations piece that Diane just mentioned. We do get frequently message in different publications that really focus on travelers and a specific audience that I think we're trying to target. I know today, going around the world of social media, is, we are ranked as one of North America's most scenic towns. So we're number four, so I think we're pretty good. But these type of publications, they also really shine a light on our different museums here in town. The Blithe Wall, Linden Place, the Harrischau, you know, staying in our historic downtown, spending time in our bed and breakfast here within the community. And in addition to that, I guess, in addition to the Walking Tours, we are working with the East Bay Newspaper on their upcoming brochures that go in our different kiosk around town and, you know, really letting people know what's here in the community. I guess in terms of investment-wise, I know that we have a partnership that started a little bit earlier last year with Connect Career Newport, which is an arm of the Newport Chamber of Commerce, to really advertise what spaces are available here in the community for people who, you know, want to come in and invest in Bristol. I know that there is also an effort from Commerce RI to have an active database as well for properties available in Bristol.
Thank you. What other questions does Council have?
That is, I agree, I think we do a tremendous amount in this area and have for a long time. You know, I may be, think, living in the middle of it most of my life or all of my life, I mean, I'm very much aware of it. I think, if anything, what we need to do is, won't come as any surprise to any of you, is spend a little bit more money on our marketing campaign and really maybe focus in beyond just the museums, but of the collection of historic homes that we have and how they can be linked to other, you know, famous architects and so forth in the region. So, I mean, if anything, that's where I would see us going. I don't, I think the other thing that you missed, Chris, is that we have your position. And a large part of that position was to focus on economic development in terms of bringing businesses to Bristol, but also, you know, a large part of it has become the tourism and other aspects of what you're doing, the social media end of it. So, I mean, I think we've been well-served by the money we've invested in Lou Hammond, for example, and in that Explore Bristol, and for what they get, which has been reduced over the years, I think it needs to go back up, and I think that we get a lot of national press because of it. And so those rankings that you mentioned, it's not because somebody's just walking around, you know, looking on a map of the country and saying, like, I wonder what this town is like, it's because somebody is promoting people going there and promoting it. So I think that we do a great deal of this, and I appreciate your summary of the Main Street Program in particular, you know, specifically, I should say.
Well, first of all, thank you for your efforts and interest. It certainly is an important community. But I would ask the question, with Discover Newport, which is a regional, and with the Bristol Merchants and all that, why haven't you engaged with them and approached them to actually co-sponsor this particular event?
There was an attempt made to meet with the Explore Bristol group at a meeting prior to this meeting to engage them, and that meeting didn't take place. If I may, I'd like to simplify our request. It seems the group has taken the position that we're asking to become, that you sponsor Bristol to become a Main Street America community. That is not at all what we're here asking for. We're asking you to sponsor a two-part lecture series. That's all. A meeting with Donovan Rickema for our residents and stakeholders to really understand what it means when we say historic preservation is an economic engine. What does that mean? And demonstrate it by the use of data, real data that applies to Bristol. We haven't signed anything. We're learning. Main Street America is to come and tell you, all of us, what becoming a Main Street America community involves. All the things that Chris spoke to, we need to learn. We need to learn more than a few lines on a website by a representative who's a principal in that company. We should want to know that. And then we can evaluate all of that and say, do we want to go forward? How do we want to go forward? At that level, will we know what Grow Smart Rhode Island thinks of this whole thing, which, by the way, they have told me directly they're very interested in? Could they, in fact, become a sponsor on a statewide level? I mean, we don't know any of that. All we want to do is to have a lecture series to expose residents to information and business leaders and yourselves. That's what we're asking for. That's the sponsorship we want. To become a Main Street community would take at least a year, if not more, and a very sincere commitment on the town's part. As was stated, the requirements that they set are very substantial. That's why they succeed. That's why they succeed. Mr. Texera knows that I worked hard with the Roger Williams University to bring them in closer partnership with the town. One of the very simple things that we did was we bought banners to place on the polls. They never got posted. If I didn't call Tony, and no, I'm not knocking Tony, he's got a lot on his plate when he was town administrator, they didn't get put up in the polls. I hate to do this. Diane says about the Walking Tour, three months ago, the Walking Tour was dormant, dead, in Texas, and it was because of my efforts with her to get it put up. It hadn't been up for years. What we're looking at here is, can we provide support through volunteerism, not more work on the part of the people that are here, but support to those people to, in fact, move the town forward? And to begin that with an opportunity to understand just what that means. That's all.
Clear. What's this council's pleasure?
Well, now that I have a better understanding that the sponsorship doesn't have to do with the redundancy in it specifically, and correct me if I'm wrong, for a lecture series, which I need to understand, what are the plans after this lecture series? What's that, the sponsorship?
We will be...
Even if we don't do a sponsorship, I still would like you to have the opportunity to have that series.
We intend to...
At least I would, I don't want to speak for the rest of my colleagues, but...
Okay. You need to let Vice Chair finish. We allowed you to speak freely and clearly. Please allow him.
Regardless of the, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regardless of the sponsorship, I still would like to have you have that lecture series, and I still want the people of Bristol to have that opportunity to learn. I still would like to understand a little bit better about what happens after that, that strategic plan, that sort of thing, because I do understand where my colleagues are coming from in regards to the redundancy, and I'd like to see how that all fits in. And maybe you don't know, and that's okay, but long and the short of it, that's where I'm at right now.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
May I respond?
Sure.
Of course. We will bring these two lecturers to town. We're going to do that. We've committed to do it. We have requested that you co-sponsor it with us, partially out of the desire to do this in the Burnside Building because of its central location and so forth. There are other locations where we can do it. We're prepared to do that if we have to. This is going to happen. We will invite people here to participate, whether they do or they don't. That remains to be seen, but we will do it. We would love to be able to have your support in exploring two presentations by two nationally-recognized experts. Listen to it, take notes, build your thoughts, and let's come back and talk in June and say, okay, now where do we go with this? Anywhere? Nowhere? What do you want to do? That's what we're asking. Thank you.
I just think that...
Thank you.
We don't need to sponsor this at this point because we're all learning about it. I mean, I feel that we do a lot in historic preservation, but I've been doing historic preservation stuff in Bristol since I was in high school, when they had classes on it. So I may think a little bit differently about it. I think we do a lot. I think, if anything, we need to promote it. And I looked at the report briefly that was written for Newport that you sent with your letter, Keith, and just about all of the photographs in that report and so much, I kind of skimmed it, and I thought, well, what is new about this? Because it's the way I think about it anyway, you know, to a large degree. Every picture that wasn't specific to Newport or Situate or somewhere else was for Bristol. Bristol's been a leader in this area, I think, for a long time in terms of preservation and realizing, and that's why we have a real historic district as opposed to a voluntary one, which I am always surprised that it even makes the list. And we have, as a council, fought against many, 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 many people over the years trying to get us to get rid of the district. So I don't really, you're a separate nonprofit entity, and there's many other organizations floating around that we work with. I think you should just go forward and do it yourselves and have us just come, if we're able to, on those particular days, to hear the speakers. And I don't really see, with the concerns that we have at this point and where this is going, I mean, obviously, there's, you don't just bring people in this with no, you know, end game in mind. You have some thoughts about Main Street USA and so forth and so on, you know, which is a big proposition on the part of the town. I don't think we should be involved with it. This is my personal opinion. Not as an entity, I don't think we should be involved with it until it's all taken place, people have maybe gone and hear more about it, and then we can, you know, make a determination if we want to go forward with it. But I feel that we're already doing a lot of it and that we don't need to be a co-sponsor at this point in time. So that's just my view on that. So with that, I would say that we don't, I know it was a motion if we need that or whatever, that we don't sponsor it at this point in time, but that we, you know, encourage you to move forward as your organization and, you know, hopefully find, you know, I don't know where you stand, you don't have to answer me on that, but like with Historic Preservation Society, the Bristol Historical Society, and other organizations, Roger Williams, others in relation to this. So that's my view, and that would be my motion.
Is there a second? I'll second that.
If I may just add, we are working with the Historic and Preservation Society. We have had many meetings with a variety of organizations. Part of what you learn if you do that is that everybody's got his own silo, his own place in this whole thing. And they don't necessarily overlap. They don't necessarily coordinate their efforts, so they use the power of mass to join together and get things done. Everybody's kind of working on their own thing, and they protect their own little silo. This concept, if we go down that road, is to put a superstructure over it so that it is managed as a whole, not one silo or another as a whole. Thank you for listening. We appreciate it, and we will be inviting some members of the administration and town council to these meetings, and we hopefully will get your support and cooperation by attending. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Was there someone else that wanted to share something before we take a vote? I'm not looking for additional, but if someone raised their hand, so yes, please, before we vote. Of course. Please state your name for the record, too.
Tom Bergen-Holmes.
Thank you.
Just two points I'd like to make, real brief. I don't think Keith asked for a penny, a nickel, a dime, a quarter, a dollar. He didn't ask for any money, number one. Number two, I think it's a disservice to list all the costs that Chris and others listed, but never list the data to back up the benefits of what that cost might support. It's okay to list the cost, but you have to go beyond the cost. You have to look what, long-term, Main Street America has done for the 1,600 other communities or the 900 other communities and what effect that has had on those communities. So I think it's important to get both sides of the story, I guess, is what I'm, and you have to get all the data, not just part of the data. But again, what Keith never asked for a dollar. All we asked for was the ability to use a particular building. So, thanks.
Thank you. So there was a motion and a second? Did you have, did you need to share something?
Yeah.
Of course you can.
Just for a discussion.
Just for a discussion. Well, first and foremost, I want to thank Mr. Maloney and Mr. Bergenholz for coming up here and speaking, and both Diane and Chris for sharing with us some of the information that they had. I guess one of the things that kind of worries me a little bit the most about any kind of sponsorship or anything like that is that one of the things I found myself doing today while I was at work, or while I was doing a little bit of research and that kind of thing on the organization and on the individual who would have been speaking for the organization, is that I just caught myself doing a lot of research on it, just to make sure that who we were sponsoring was somebody who would be, you know, somebody that the town of Bristol would want to sponsor, whether it would be somebody who we could really put our name behind. And one of the things that kind of occurred to me was, and I agree so much with the substance of everything that you guys are saying, and I think that by coming up here and raising these points, we've actually had a decent discussion here about preservation and the way that we market it and everything like that. But one of the things that I worried about the most was if we are ever asked to sponsor somebody up here, every single one of us is going to be required to make sure that that individual doesn't have something in their background or something like that that would make Bristol embarrassed. And so, and it would take a lot for us to do that for every single person, or to make sure that there's some sort of equal time for somebody else who might have another perspective on this issue. And so, while I really look forward to having this individual come and talk to us, I'm really interested in this idea of place-based economics. I'm an academic by training, and so hearing these types of things are, will be something that I am very excited to consume, and very excited to learn more about, and bring here to the council so that we can have discussions about the economic value of preservation. But one of the things, again, I worry about, and I want to make sure that I'm very transparent about how I'm going to vote about this with you, is that I just do not think our council should be in the business of sponsoring people who are, you know, speaking on behalf of even certain types of perspectives. And so, while I might disagree with you on the sponsorship, I want to make sure that I'm very clear that, on the substance of the issue, there is the possibility of some alignment when this issue comes before us.
So, we have a motion and a second, not to sponsor? All in favor, not to sponsor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the town council, is the Public Service Appointments section, beginning with the Board of Canvassers, alternate with term to expire in March of 2020. You have the resignation of Carolyn Breslin, who serves, who is serving currently as the Republican alternate. We've informed the Republican Town Committee of their responsibility to nominate another alternate member.
I'll make a motion to accept Carolyn Breslin's resignation with a letter of thanks.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is the Board of Tenants of Fears. This is for a two-year term, expiring in January of 2021. You have Donald Luminallo, currently serving, who would like to be reappointed. Michelle Tanner, currently serving, is not seeking reappointment. And you have two new applicants, Carol Puyo and Richard Hunter, both of 1014 Hope Street.
I make a motion to reappoint Donald Luminallo and to interview the other two candidates.
We have a motion and a second. Before we vote on that, Lou, we have a pending workshop. If we could maybe work that into it, if possible?
Already been invited.
My goodness, you are efficient. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is the Bristol Housing Authority. This is for a five-year term, expiring January of 2024. Manuel N. Cotta Jr., currently serving, is interested in being reappointed. You have a recommendation supporting his interest from the Executive Director of the Housing Authority.
Motion to reappoint Manuel Cotta to the Bristol Housing Authority.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just a glowing report from Candy Panzer, the Executive Director. It was great. Good job.
Nice addition. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the Christmas Festival Committee. This is for, this is a one-year term. It actually should have been before you a while ago, but it's got a little bit lost in the shuffle. You have the recommendation for the new membership from the chairman, Mike O'Reilly.
Mr. Solicitor, do I have to, because my wife is on that list?
I would, if you would.
I move that we approve the list that's submitted, and anyone else who would like to volunteer, I'm sure they would love to have you.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is the List of Special Constables, Private Investigators, Matrons, and Retiree Officers for 2019, as recommended by the Town Administrator and Chief of Police.
Motion to approve, as stated.
So moved.
Second. No, I think you were the second.
I feel like that was a third, yeah.
Yeah, I was the third, he was the second, and you were the-
We had a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is the Special Constable Fire Police, as recommended by the Town Administrator and Fire Chief.
I move that we approve the list as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next is the Assistant Harbor Masters. This is for a one-year term, expiring in January of 2020. I draw your attention to the recommendation of the Harbor Master. It's a requirement of the ordinance that the Harbor Master make recommendations for these particular appointments. You have several currently serving who have asked for, to be reappointed, and also some who have not specifically applied. My suggestion is that if you wish to support the, fully, the recommendation of the Harbor Master, is that you would make that contingent upon the receipt of the applications from the missing individuals. So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that everyone is accounted for in the auxiliary group, but you may want to have a similar motion in case I missed someone for item H. That is the auxiliary Harbor Masters with the recommendation from the Harbor Master.
What's this council's pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Auxiliary.
The next is the Conservation Commission. This is a three-year term, expiring in December of 2021. You have a new applicant, Lee Anne Freitas, of 134 Bayview Avenue, who is interested in being appointed.
Motion to set up an interview for the, what is it, February 13th special council meeting?
So moved.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And the next is the Joint Finance Committee. This is for a two-year term, expiring in January of 2021. The Town Administrator informs your honorable body that he has appointed himself to his particular seat. The chairman serves by virtue of the statute. All require confirmation from the council. It's been the council's tradition that the council members serve fully on this board, but it's not a necessity.
What's this council's pleasure?
Motion to accept the appointment to JFC, Town Administrator.
Second. And then-
I think that the rest of, I think that, yes, I think that we should continue with that, yeah.
Serving Body Council.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor? Thank you for doing that, though.
Okay. Item K, this is the Mount Hope Trust. It's a two-year term, expiring in December of 2020. Susan C. Maloney, currently serving, is seeking reappointment.
Make a motion to reappoint Susan.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The North and East Burial Grounds Commission is a five-year term, expiring in January of 2024. Scott Penella, 100 Peck Avenue, currently serving, seeking reappointment.
Motion to reappoint Scott Penella.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And finally, item M, the Tree Warden. This is for the current year. Steven Saracino of 219A Queens River Drive, West Kingston, is seeking reappointment. You have a letter of recommendation provided by former council member Edward P. Stewart, Jr.
I make a motion to reappoint Steve to the position of Tree Warden.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. I just had one quick comment. I've worked with Steve, so have all of us, and actually quite closely, but no close, much, let me reword that and say the Administrator works much closer with Steve, but I have had nothing but positive responses back from the community. His knowledge base is excellent, but his mannerisms are on the same level. So, we appreciate what you do. Thank you.
I certainly have to concur with that, Mr. Chairman. I had the pleasure to work with Steve, and I concur, he was nothing but professional and always courteous with the residents.
So, we had a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And this is the part where I say, thank you. This council and the town appreciate, and we spoke quite a while on that last, or a few agenda items ago, about volunteerism. We were just talking about it just now. So many people entrusted, and the town, the people of the town, and we're fortunate enough to speak for it. So, the 23,000 people of the town say, thank you. It's a big deal to put your time, effort, and energy away from your family and friends to give back to the community, and we appreciate it. So, again, thank you.
The next, the next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the town council, is something that appeared on the last agenda during the council chairman's prerogative regarding the Volkswagen Dieselgate funds from, and he asked for a follow-up. This is a report provided by the Director of Community Development.
So, Diane Williamson gave us a letter, kind of breaking down, that, as suggested by the town council's last meeting, Rhode Island received $4.1 million through the Attorney General's office. Dieselgate, if you're not, you're probably familiar with it, was VW lying about their emissions, and they were required to give communities or states dollars for that lie to help better the environment. I spoke with Rep. Marshall today. He had a conversation with the Attorney General, and this is why I wanted to share this part of it. He sat with the Attorney General's office and asked about what was going on with this. And one of the questions, and don't read too much into this, was there was no, and actually Diane mentioned this in here, said that this was, these funds were distributed to agencies and organizations discretionarily, I guess, is that a word, or discretionary funds? What we wanted to find out, and we don't have the answer to yet, so again, don't read that as nefarious, but at our next meeting, we'll be able to know how that was done, because we did not have the opportunity to ask for that money. This environmental fund is pretty big. I mean, $4.1 million, East Providence, no dig on them, I mean, excellent for them to get $800 and something thousand to help them offset some of their costs. We have Tan Yard, Brook Phase Two, and the list continues, because Phase Three, such and so forth. So, anything that helps us, and this is not taxpayer dollars. This is VW money that belongs to the taxpayers at this point. So, I'm going to ask the council, if you would, to continue this to our next meeting so we can get an update of how Rep. Marshall made out with the Attorney General's office.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Diane, for the memo.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the town council, is item I-1. This is CRMC notice regarding the application of Walter Pacheco. This has a project that's at 148 Narrows Road. There is a requirement that CRMC is asking if the town has a comment that it should provide a response before February 2. There's a recommendation provided by the Town Administrator and Harbor Master, and that a certain comment is recommended by the Harbor Master.
Please.
Based on the recommendation from the Harbor Master that this be looked into by the Coast Guard, the United States Coast Guard, to survey the area, so that we don't face any concerns or issues going forward, I certainly would recommend that we postpone this, you know, until action is, or until there's an opportunity for them to review it.
I'll second the motion, and I agree.
So, in other words, you want to convey on your behalf the concerns as raised by the Harbor Master?
Correct.
Okay.
That was eloquent. So, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm sorry, I didn't get the second. Whose second was it? Mr. Sweeney? Similarly, another CRMC project, in this case, this is the project of Douglas and Catherine O'Brien, with the property located at 461 Papa Squash Road. The recommendation of the Town Administrator Harbor Master is that the project appears to be suitable without comment.
Based on the recommendation from the Town Administrator and the Harbor Master, I would recommend we approve it.
Second. Is this a receivable file? Would be more, is that?
I think so.
Okay. Do you mind, would you?
I'm good with that. We're receivable file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, receivable file. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is item I-3. This is the annual Keep Bristol Clean Project with the people who are involved in forming the council of the Earth Day Cleanup on April 27, 2019.
Do we have anybody here from, not yet, but we will when it gets closer, correct? Unless we do, do we have somebody here? No? Okay. This is a wonderful event. I'm hoping to have a quick cameo from Bob Holt, to see his smiling face. He's been involved with this for so long. So, Lou, we need a receivable file on this?
I think so, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to receivable file.
Second. So, there's a motion and a second to receivable file the 2019 Earth Day Cleanup and Recycling Program on April 27. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is item I-4, and this is from the Director of Community Development regarding the Prudence Island Ferry Dock Agreement with Rhode Island Department of Transportation. You have recommendation provided by the Town Administrator and the Harbor Master.
So, Mr. Administrator, would you take 30 seconds and just refresh the public's memory and this council's memory on, I know that this is, this goes back a little way, but this is our next step in regards, this is good news, and I think it's worth sharing again, so.
Sure. Prudence Island Dock is where the ferry loads and unloads. The end of the dock was repaired. We were waiting for funding. We had applied for a grant through Community Development, through Senator Jack Reed's office, excuse me, and that was, we were awarded $1.2 million. It was a 20% match, so I think it was $240,000, I believe, was our local match. It was an 80/20 grant. So, we're moving to, within the next year, get the dock fixed. The north side of the dock has sheet piling that's holding it together. The bottom part of the sheet piling, where the harbor floor is, has rusted away. So, essentially, what the dock is doing, it's slowly washing out, so we're getting sinkholes on the surface. So, this will rebuild both sides, north and south. South side, the granite blocks will be reset. It'll be refilled, packed. There'll be, I think they call them, is it, dead men? Dead men to hold a new sheet piling up. So, we're going to do it right, but it is a big job, and in the end, it'll be paved over and back in service.
This is a great example of what we're just talking about with Dieselgate. This town does a phenomenal job. We also need to thank Senator Jack Reed for his immense efforts to get this complete. He has been a friend of Bristol, and we appreciate it, but he's been a friend to Bristol because Bristol was ready to ask for it and have a shovel-ready project. So, again, this is a great example of some excellent work. We saved the taxpayers, one point, direct taxpayers, I should be careful with that, right, because we're all taxpayers in the federal, too, $1.168 million that we did not have to pay out of, directly out of Bristol coffers to get this fixed. to get this fixed. It's phenomenal.
Wow, that's phenomenal.
Nice job.
It's fantastic.
$292 from the state.
Correct.
Plus, we get $292 in addition from the state, so... Isn't it? That's what I'm reading here.
This is our match, so actually, it's a little bit confusing because this is a DOT grant agreement. They will be the grant administrators for this. It's a federal grant. So the 20% is actually the town's match, but it's being managed by the DOT.
So I'm going to flip that and say, "We got $1.46 million worth of work done for $292,000."
There you go.
Right?
Right.
Wasn't that nice? Yeah.
I like that deal.
Excellent.
It's a good deal.
So Diane, Mr. Administrator, what do you need, or are you... What do we need for a motion to authorize you to sign this?
Yes, you need to authorize the Town Administrator to sign it, subject to any final revisions
back on the draft from the DOT.
Perfect. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved. Yeah. Diane just summed it up really well.
That was perfect. Is there a second?
Sounds like Mary was second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just had one question. I was just wondering with the marina expansion and this project going on, is there any work that could be tied together while one's going on, or are they completely separate?
But together, to be quite honest, because although it doesn't have to do with the expansion, it is part of our waterfront.
Right, right. It is.
I just want to be clear. It's a good point. This is a grant exclusively for the Prudence Ferry Dock.
Okay.
So we can't use this funds to do anything else except this.
Yeah.
So we're going to stop before it gets any muddier. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Nice job, everyone.
Very good.
Okay, the next item is memorandum from the Harbor Master to the Town Administrator regarding Prudence Island seasonal parking.
Mr. Administrator, did you want to speak to this, or Greg?
Well, as we get ready to go with the ferry parking lot being redone, we lease out 34 spots right now to Prudence Island people for seasonal parking for $850. We had met earlier in, on, say, September, when we talked about the marina expansion, about a parking plan, and I had laid that out to you guys, and I included it in your packets, to move the seasonal people over to the lot we rent from Russ Carey in. There's 34 spots over there. We can move those over, and then my suggestion would be to knock $100 off the bill for $750 a spot. That'll pay for the lot. The lot's $24,000 for us to rent. We'll be in a surplus of $1,500, and that little lot costs us $1,600 that we rent seasonally. So we'll be in the plus a little bit for, you know, two-thirds of the month renting a little lot.
Although that sounds...
It's a big lot, right?
That sounds good. I don't think that's actually the correct math, and what I mean by that is that we'll lose proceeds that we're currently... You were realizing from the Prudence Island Ferry Dock. So although we'll be covering the lot, which...
Covering the lot.
In and of itself, sounds positive, and I think that... But we're actually, if we do this, we are losing those revenues from... How many slips did... I'm sorry, how many spaces?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. So $3,400 is the cost difference. I don't think this is inappropriate. I think it's... I also, I was a big fan... I actually suggested that we do some changes here, certainly not to do with this work, but I think that's a more appropriate parking lot for the marina expansion. It's also a more appropriate parking lot for visitors to town, however we can look at those things, because it looks out into the water. I also believe that, and I believe that you'll... We'll be talking about this with marina expansion, is that obviously, we're not going to let the Prudence Island... We're not going to forget about them. We need to make sure that there's loading and unloading for them, so they don't have to walk the big stuff across the street and all of that, but I think this is very appropriate. What's my colleagues' thoughts?
I just had a question about it. Is this the... It wasn't clear to me. Is this the little lot or the big lot?
The big lot.
The big lot. And is this the lot that we already rent, or is this the other lease or the other side that we're going to take on?
The one we already rent.
Okay, so there'll still be room for other people to park in there?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Thirty-four spots in that lot that we currently rent, that we would move these people over to if they so choose to have it. The little lot, we would still rent seasonally, right across from the ferry. That still leaves another 36-space lot that's closed off if...
So what I'm asking about is the big lot holds more than 34 cars?
No, just 34 cars.
Okay, so aren't there businesses and other people parking in that? Like we...
Yes, there is.
There is.
There is.
So there will still... There won't be room for them?
There won't be room for them in there. We have the small lot during the busy season when that's being used. Right now, there's three cars that park in there. Two are from Prudence Island. They park there illegally overnight, and one is the caretaker for Mr. Carey, who parks in there, a little war truck, I believe.
So this is... I know this is temporary, at least, until this other lot gets fixed and open.
I think I can help.
Thank you.
How this idea originated during the meetings regarding the marina expansion, we learned that there is a requirement. We have to agree to the ascent that... Excuse me. There's... We're required to have three-quarters of one-vehicle parking space for every slip that we build for this marina expansion. We have to own those parking spaces, because once the lease is up, we're going to have a marina with no parking, or if we don't get the lease renewed. So we have to own those parking spaces. That's the only parking lot we have down there that we own, which is a Prudence Island Dock. So if we want to build a marina, we looked high and low. We thought of shuttle buses, bringing the boaters to their slips, and nothing was feasible. That's the only lot down there that we own that can accommodate those parking spaces for the marina expansion. So unless we can use that parking lot that we own, we're not going to build a marina expansion, and this...
But I think to Mary's point...
My question is, my question is just, should we maybe see if we can go back and work out something to take on some more spaces at that large lot? That's my only question. I mean, because we're still going to need the parking. I understand that the need, what you just explained, also the fact that it's going to be closed for rent repairs anyway. So I don't have an issue with this. I'm just simply asking, do we need more spaces, because we're going to be taking up, you know, while this other lot is closed, it's not going to... While the work is going on, there's not going to be other parking for other people, you know, like the merchants and others, that we have kept that lot, leasing that lot for that reason. That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm asking. So have you talked to them about giving us more space there, or if we can work out something? I know it was very expensive, and that's why we gave up part of it, you know, but in this context of what's going on, have you had any further meetings, or...
I did hear that residents of Prudence Island have been renting directly from the property owner on the lot that we don't rent. So they have that option of long-term leases on the privately owned and managed lots. I have not approached the property owner about renting an additional lot, just because there is... You know, it is an expense for us. But we can monitor. He's very willing and open and cooperative, so if it appears that we have a shortage of parking there, we can revisit it.
So why don't we do this, because I agree with you? Maybe we could, Greg, why don't you monitor that, and we'll take a look at that. Obviously, this is the quieter time of year, but as it progresses, let's make sure we... If we need to revisit that, I agree with what the administrator said. The owner's been very accommodating, and will work with us. So if we need to expand that parking space, let's make sure we keep an eye on it so it doesn't turn into an issue, so.
When I went over to Prudence Island in October and spoke with the residents over there, they were putting a little bit of pressure on their town council and town...
Yeah, they called me, yeah.
Yes, they did.
It was a fun time, but they... They were putting some pressure on them, maybe to rent that other lot as well from Mr. Carey, and so we'll see how it shakes up. The reason that I'm asking for this now is because we're getting ready to go out for billing for next year, so if we're going to change the fee, you know, we have to do it soon. Those are due March... For March 1, those bills are due for the seasonal parking.
So is there a reason for reducing the fees, that they have to walk further?
And that was it. And I just made a recommendation, $750. I don't know. I don't think we should reduce it at all, personally as a taxpayer, but...
So I'm confused. Why recommend? Because if there's no issue... I want to make sure that, obviously, we represent the people of Bristol, but we're not doing it at the exclusion of the renters from Portsmouth, by no way, shape, or form. So, but if there's nothing wrong, I just want to make sure they have a place to get their stuff in, and they don't have to lug across, you know...
It's going to be challenging during construction.
Sure.
For anything to happen down there. You know, we'll have two lanes of traffic the entire time to come on and off the ferry, but I, you know, I don't know. I thought $750 was reasonable, because we're making them walk further. It's not right there at the dock, you know?
It's a lot closer than Burton Street.
I agree with you.
So although I heard it, I'm okay with where it is right now, then, hearing all of what you shared with us.
Sure.
What's my colleagues' thoughts?
Yeah.
And I'm talking about the $850. I apologize.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Leaving it whatever.
I'm good with that.
Mr. Chairman, I just was conferring with the solicitor. It is in the town code, so if you're going to change it, you'd have to change the ordinance also.
So let's leave it exactly how it is. What's my counsel's... What's the counsel's...
Yeah.
With the $850, you mean? Yeah, you can't change it without changing it.
That's right. There's a savings in all ends here. We don't have to issue another ordinance, and at the same time, you know?
So for clarity for everyone, what we just said was, is that it was proposed that maybe we have a savings of $750, but the clerk and the solicitor pointed out to us that any changes in that fee would require an ordinance change. So we cannot, in this meeting, change that without changing the ordinance. So I think we all agree that we'll just leave it at the $850 across the street.
Agreed.
Okay. So can we have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
And Greg, we're still charging $10 a night if you're on the Prudence park?
This year, it'll all depend on if, when we start construction, if we start construction.
Okay.
Obviously, if we're going to... If we move those people over there now, then we'll have that parking lot. We don't start ferry construction this spring. If it gets delayed to the fall, because, you know, we'd be pushing back on the ferry season.
Yep.
You know, the summer season. So if we have to delay it to the fall, then we could open that lot up for $10 a day overnight parking for the summer.
Got it. Okay, great.
Just don't forget to change the signage. That could be an issue.
Oh, no.
Right?
We've got something coming.
I have one question. Just regarding the parking lot, when we say seasonal, when would that be open? The... We're talking about the small lot right across from the ferry, correct?
Yeah, we rent that for six months. Memorial Day, it's open, and we close November 1.
Okay, so it opens as of Memorial Day weekend?
Yeah, Memorial Day weekend.
Thank you.
May 1, May 1 through October 31, so that we're open for the walkabout and Halloween, and then November 1 to close. So it's six months.
More sense at the beginning of May, yeah. That's good.
Thank you.
So Lou, just for clarity, does this require just a receivable file at this point in time? Is there... There's no change in fees, or do we want to... Help me out, please.
You just allow me a second. I just wanted to see what else was in that, was in that item.
So how about if we get a motion, how about this, to...
Leave it as it is.
Leave it as it is and follow the suggestions of the change in the parking lot. How's that?
That works, yeah.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
There's a second. I know Lou's verifying it, but that'll... That, I think, takes into account all of the things that were recommended, except the change in fees. Perfect. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next item is RFQ number 896. This is for professional engineering for wastewater-related treatment and collection system. This was a request for qualifications only. There are no fees specified.
So we want to refer this to the administrator?
Motion to refer to the Town Administrator to act in the best interest of the town.
So moved.
Second.
But there's no...
I just... I'm sorry, Diane.
Oh, no, I was just going to say, I don't see anything.
It's... And that was, I think that's the clerk's point, is we asked for qualifications, and we got one respondent back for those qualifications. That was it. Am I correct?
Yeah, I suppose I should have read that. I was busy still on the...
Well, we're...
Number I-5. You did hear from Beta Group of Lincoln, and they did provide their qualifications, yes.
Great. So we had a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And the next is bid 987. This was for a specific used vehicle. You have one bid received from Ryder Vehicle Sales LLC, Warwick, Rhode Island, in the amount of $20,000. Could you tell us what this is?
Sure. So if you recall, we ordered a new water jet pump. So what we want to do is take the old pump off the current chassis, because the chassis is in very good shape. The truck is in good shape, and we wanted a used truck to put the old water pump, a water jet on, so that we could use that up at the compost facility. So we'll have a backup and a redundant pump. So we couldn't see spending $80,000 for a new chassis, so we're...
Excellent. Okay, what's this council's pleasure?
I recommend we refer this to the Town Administrator to act in the best interest of the town.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next is item K-1. This is the periodic report provided by Alan Klepper, the Barrington Director of the Bristol County Water Authority.
Make a motion to receivable file.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to receivable file. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And the next item is a request for executive session, which I'm assuming the council will take up at the conclusion of the public agenda, and then we begin with the individual council member agenda items with the chairman.
So in an effort to lessen our items, our individual items at the end, two quick things. First, congratulations to Don Luis Falee with their installation of their officers for 2019, the full council administrator, and we had state representative and senators there. It was a nice presentation. It always is, and it reminds me how lucky we are to have organizations like them in Bristol. That makes Bristol Bristol. The other thing I had was, if you haven't done it yet, check out our website. Chris, nice job cleaning it up. Nice job to all that have been part of this. That is what you see now, and the great thing is, is that that's what you see right now, but it'll change. So there's different backgrounds, and depending on where you're going, it is a work in progress. There are things that maybe you're looking for. I know I've had people reach out to me and say, "When's the next council meeting?" And there are some wonderful steps to make it easier, quicker, and simpler to get to it, and on that note, those wonderful and simple steps, it is now easier to get e-permitting. You can do all kinds of things that you couldn't do before, but it's even easier now. That's partly because of the website. That's also partly because of a lot of efforts from a lot of people, permits for building and a myriad of things. We were talking about HCC earlier. So being able to know what's going on, I think Diane, you like to say this, when you're in your PJs, right, so you don't have to come in here. It's a nice way of doing it. So if you haven't, go to the website, check it out, and we're open to feedback on it. So if you see something that you think could be improved, or my goodness, you can't believe how good it is, give us a buzz, because we'd like to hear about it. Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yeah, good point. Chairman, on the website, excellent. I've already been using it. It's not as clunky. It's smoother to use and to find the information you need. I wanted to give a big shout-out to Collette Andrews School, placing as amongst the top 20% of public schools in Rhode Island. That's fantastic. We all know a good education is the key to success in life, right, and we know you can get a good education here, right in town. So kudos to the school system. And I wanted to also point out and ask, Chris, a quick question on this. It looks like Bristol receives qualified opportunity zoning designation by the U.S. Treasury, an opportunity zone program that encourages private investment for low-income neighborhoods around the country. So I was just curious on how that's going to affect the town. Looks like it's a good opportunity for to spur more investment into town.
Yeah, so I believe it was brought up a little bit earlier this evening. So as you mentioned, or it was mentioned, the opportunity zone is a federal community development tax incentive program that was established by the tax cut 17. The goal of it is to encourage the long-term investment into historically low-income neighborhoods. So in Bristol... So in Bristol, that area encompasses the majority of our downtown, as well as our Wood Street neighborhood.
Okay.
So, and we are unique where it's right in the heart of our community. Really, in the future, investors who have realized capital gains through other investments can take that money and put it inside these, what they called qualified opportunity funds. That's a fancy way of saying projects within the community. And by doing that, they receive some pretty substantial tax benefits. So that includes deferred taxes on the capital gains that they use for investment, and then over a period of time, the amount that is owed on those, that original investment is decreased. And finally, any, after ten years, any capital gains that are accrued as part of this investment in the opportunity zone is tax-free. So really, this is a program that encourages investors to take their money and keep it here in the town of Bristol for the long term, to benefit our community, so.
Chris, if I may, I mean, there's multitude of benefits. One, obviously, direct tax benefit to the investor, but the investor stays invested. So it isn't a put the money in, make your profit, and leave. They must see that success. If they don't see the success, they're not going to see return on their investment. So they're owning the property, which is, I think, massively important, so.
And really, our hope has become, you know, like you said, really invested. There is a lot of buzz around this right now. I think Diane was the one who mentioned it. I've been going to a lot of different seminars that have been hosted by national groups, regional entities, law firms, and I have had discussions with a couple of our local investors to say, hey, what's this all about? The one I went to last night had almost 200 people there, of lawyers and investors here in Rhode Island who are closely watching this program. So, you know, going forward, you know, we're going to do everything we can to sort of shine a light on the fact that we're part of this program and we have some, not to make a pun, but some pretty cool opportunities that are happening here in town. But the regulations are still being developed, so I'm hoping that those come through here in the spring, and that's sort of being taken care of at the federal level. And, you know, really, what can come out of this, there's tons of options. So new business ventures downtown, revitalization efforts, redevelopment of blighted property, and that's just to name a few. But on the website that we were just mentioning, if you want to go to bristleri.gov, I'm going to try and keep the public up to date on that, and hopefully, we can have some more announcements here in the future.
Excellent. Thank you. Have a good night.
Mr. Texera.
Okay. I thought it was Tim's turn, but that was pretty quick, we're moving along. Okay.
Thanks, Chris.
First of all, I know it's, this is the first time that we meet in this year, so happy new year to all. Feliz Anoche. And also, you mentioned Don Luis Felipe, while Bristol Sports also had the installation of offices, and I was glad to be there to swear in the offices, and so they have a new board as well. And I'd just like to thank you to Mike Davis, his coworker there, and Archie, thank you and good night.
Ms. Pirella.
Thank you. Well, it is the new year, you're right. It seems like that was such a long time ago, doesn't it, already? So a couple of things. First, I just want to congratulate, well, just to mention that the police appreciation mass that St. Mary's had, and the impressive turnout that you had, chief of your officers, and some retirees as well. It was, notwithstanding Steve, you know, I was like, I said, ah, I don't think Steve is here, then he was with the police retirees. But I, it was, you know, I know there was some question, is how many people might go, because you still have to have your patrols out on the street and so forth. Very, I think it was a really nice event, and it was very impressive of all of the officers that came, so. And I hope that it's something that will catch on. I think there was a fair number of people there, and hopefully, as they see it on Facebook and in other venues, just see how impressive it was. So thank, thank, thank you, I think, to all of your men and women of your department, and if you could convey that, I think that'd be really appreciated. The other thing is, just quickly on the pink bag initiative, I just, I'd seen some buzz on, around town. It's my, like, little hobby. I don't ever respond on Facebook, but I do look at it. And I saw that there were some people questioning as to whether the bags were, the project was up or down, or going or not going. And so we are, I had asked them before to do this, but I think so many things, some people had mentioned that they didn't, don't remember getting the bags. And what I, what I personally think may have happened is they came with a postcard, and it was at the middle to end of October, which was sort of right around the election season, so it could have easily gotten thrown away. We have asked for some additional bags that, you know, should be coming to town, and we'll have them at different locations, the town hall and at DPW, for example. So I just wanted to let people know that. And I think there's a fair amount of people that have been using it, I start, I see them as I drive along, which is mainly the main roads. And the other thing I just wanted to mention, not to give you more work, Chris, but I did ask Steve this the other day, at the Don Luis Felipe. So what they're trying to do now, as the program's growing, and there are other communities in, like, Middletown and others, is to do a Twitter and, or Facebook, just to keep people abreast of what's going on. And they'll give it all prepared, and you just fill in the name of the community. So if I get that, and I'll send them your information, if that's okay, but whatever I get now, I will just forward it to you, and then you could take care of that, if that, is that okay? Put it on the Facebook, on Twitter, I don't know what you do, but, or else just on the website. I mean, I'm not that good on social media, so I don't know what you-
Put it out there.
Yeah, whatever you do, whatever Bristol does, you know? So that's, so leave that up to you. So, and with that, I think that's all that I have. Thank you so much.
Mr. Lee?
So I'll try to keep this a little bit short. I know a lot of, you know that I'm a professor of environmental policy at University of Rhode Island, and so this January, I had an opportunity to teach a J-term course, which is a short, intensive January course where students will get four credits. And I did it on the politics of the Mount Hope Bay and the politics of the Narragansett Bay. And it was the type of class that I wanted to design, I've always wanted to teach. And so one of the things that I did was I took those students in a 15-passenger van, and I brought them here to Bristol, to our Rogers Free Library, and we had a conversation with the people that were involved and saved Bristol Harbor during the whole battle over LNG. And it was a fascinating conversation. And I can't believe the LNG battle in the Mount Hope Bay, where they were planning on bringing a LNG terminal over here, and it would have shut down the bridges and everything like that, and caused all kinds of issues for our police department. So, yeah, and, and so it's hard to believe that all of that happened nine years ago. Nine years ago, all that happened. And so I brought all my students over here from URI to talk, to talk to the people here in Bristol about that at our Rogers Free Library. And I just, it was such a powerful experience for them, and they had such a great time with it. And I just want to say that the battles that have been fought over here in the Mount Hope Bay and the Narragansett Bay are battles that we have to continue to remember and to continue to tell the stories about them to our children and to our grandchildren, because they'll never understand the amount of work that goes into protecting our environment and our quality of life out here. And so I just want to leave today by saying that let's continue to tell the stories of what's been happening, the people in here who fight so hard to protect our environment here in Bristol.
Good story. Town administrator, agenda items.
Thank you. I'm going to try to keep it brief, because Chris Vitale used up a lot of my time tonight.
Doesn't sound good, Chris.
Yeah, Chris doing a great job. I think I did this last year around this time. I'd just like to make some quick introductions. Our departments are here voluntarily, obviously. Jose de Silva, our sewer superintendent, Chris Vitale, economic development, Diane Williamson, director of community development, our finance director and CPA, Julie Gosha, our acting Parks and Recreation Director, Tim Shaw, and our harbor master, Greg Marselli. Thank you for being here.
And you're acting well, Tim, nice job.
And our police chief.
Yeah, I just got to say.
Well, I was, I was just saying, jeez, I remember that nine years ago, the police chief was in the center of that controversy with the LNG tanker, I remember that vividly. And Mike Grisillo, our solicitor, of course, Lou Sharillo, the clerk.
You're going to have to stop soon.
I think we ran out of people there.
Maybe I'll end that tradition for next year. But the drainage project is going well for the sewer, sewer treatment facility. They're planning on crossing Ferry Road this week. We adjusted the detour signs for downtown businesses today, this morning, but they're, it's going well. I'd like to recognize the Williams family, Mrs. Janice Carr, and directly Shawnee Williams, who worked with us. They allowed us to purchase about 5,000 square feet of property on the south side of the sewer treatment plant. And the purpose is, that's going to allow us to bring that drainage pipe in to prevent the overflows. And as Councilman Lee stated, this is all about the environment, and we, we're, we've been working closely with the finance director and our sewer superintendent and our engineering firm. We want to get to a place down the road where we don't have any overflows. That's our goal, and we're working in that direction, but it is a commitment. But that's something we feel strong about. The Tanyard Brook project's going well, they have one more street to cross. Our contractor's going to be working right through the winter on both projects, so they have Richmond Street to cross. They've crossed four streets now for the second phase of Tanyard, so that's going well. There was some good news that I was able to share on, through my office, but really, it was the council that approved the spending for the Stony, Stony Hedge Farm property, that was seven acres on Hope Street, which is a farm across from North Farm, the Otterbonne Society area. Seven acres adjacent to our 100 acres that we currently own as a, so this would be a agricultural easement. This was a partnership between the town of Bristol and the USDA. Yeah, so that was, that's good to know that that seven acres is going to be preserved for farming for the future.
Do we purchase the development rights, or do we purchase outright?
We just have an easement, conservation, agricultural. So Mr. White, who allowed the town to purchase the rights, the easement.
Understood.
So thank you to the White family, Mr. White specifically. There's a couple other properties, too, over the last year that we purchased. There was, I say purchased, but we basically paid enough to pay the year's property taxes to the families, and that was about 14,000 square feet on Dixon Avenue. And that was to Liz, that was from Liz Tobias from Florida, and Kathleen Lewis on State Street. They're sisters that wanted to turn that property over to the town, which, that's part of the watershed up in that area, so it was, that was 14,000 square feet. And then there was one and three-quarters acres on Narrows Road recently. And that was Mr. Capa Bianco and John Capia Bianco, two brothers, one from Wakefield. It's Dr. Capa Bianco and his brother from Portsmouth. And we paid very little for the properties. It was essentially maybe the closing costs and maybe the property taxes, but the two environmentally important, small parcels, but we know they'll be preserved for the future. We're keeping an eye on the winter weather coming up. Our DPW, our director is out currently, but we're doing well. Our arborist with the bucket truck, they've been doing some tree work, which is saving us some money. The hot patch mixer will be out tomorrow. Hot patch is down to two days a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays, weather permitting, so they'll be out tomorrow. And other than that, I think things are fairly well. Thank you.
Mr. Solicitor?
You'll be convening executive session pursuant to R. General Laws 42465A5 relative to the acquisition or sale of real property. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. Good night.